Abram. Before Abram, before you did whatever you did before, I could hear it better, but I think you probably switched the microphone input. Earlier. It was, it was really scratchy coming through the microphones in general. It was really scratchy. But like I can hear you pretty clearly right now. Right, yeah. Yeah, when you. Okay, because I could hear you a little bit and make out some of this stuff, but it was really scratchy.
My apologies for the delay, folks. We're having a small technical issue. We'll hopefully be up and running here in about a minute or two. While we're working on that, Austin, do you want to just to check to make sure we can hear you?
You pretty well if you can hear me.
Okay, good. Just figured we.
Yeah.
Check that while we're at it. Okay, folks, thanks for your patience. I'm going to go ahead and call to order this special session of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is now 7:03 PM. Today is Monday, November 20th, 2023. This is our second of two special sessions that we're holding today. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. The city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first comment card I have is from Fred Zehay.
Before you start counting, let me get my counter going so I don't run long. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I think you have a copy, both hard copy and electronic of my comments. I'd like to express some comments about the new water rate schedule. First, I'm aware there were problems with the November water bills that came out, and you'll be addressing that, I think, later this evening. I recalculated my November bill using the rate schedule posted on JV website on September the 6th, which you also have a copy attached with you, which I believe is the one the city was originally proposing and which you may be discussing later tonight. I know you want to verify this, but my original bill for November was $118 roughly for 6,000 gallons of water. I did not have a second meter at that time, though I do have one now. Based on my recalculations, I calculate my bill should have been about $110, $111. So a small 6% difference between what went out in the mail versus what I recalculate. That's not my concern. My concern is that in October of '22, I also used 6,000 gallons of water. My bill was $78. That's a significant change for the same water usage. My current bill increased 41% over my bill from last year. This increase is only into the second tier of the rate schedule. I suspect the increase would be significantly higher if my usage went up to account for irrigation or for more use. And I did recalculate if I used another 6,000 gallons, the rate increase would have been 68%. So it's a big change from last year. I never saw any indication from the city that our bills were going to be increasing by 40% or by that amount. Were you aware of that as members of the council? My concern is that your rate schedule may be overly aggressive and could pose a significant burden on the residents of JV. I'd suggest you reconsider the schedule and possibly temper it for a slower phase in of the increased rates. I'd also suggest you look at individual examples to see the effect that these changes have on individuals, not just the city as a whole. Look at an individual usage and see what it does to people. I was concerned enough about the rate change and did investigate getting a second meter for irrigation purposes, which I did purchase recently. Are you, as a council, aware of the costs associated with getting a second meter? I know it's publicized the meter would cost $300 and additional plumber costs would be required. But are you aware what those additional costs were and what financial impact it has on residents? Each household is likely to be different because their plumbing at the main meter is different. However, it's not an insignificant amount to add this second meter. I found there are numerous steps in getting a second meter. You have to get a plumber to tie in the meter from the main line to the meter. In some cases, you have to get another plumber to tie in from the meter into your sprinkler system because the first plumber doesn't go beyond the meter. That's what I had to do. At all total, the plumbing costs for adding that second meter could be about $2,200 over and above the cost of the meter. I know that. I can give you invoices for that. That's what it cost me. And that's assuming you aren't required to tie into the main line from across the street, requiring the need to bore under the street. That could be significantly higher than $2,200. I doubt that every resident is financially capable of making that investment, but it seems to me this new process of sewer rate charges was made without much concern for the cost. Or am I wrong? Was this cost discussed when you made your decision to make these rate changes? Were you made aware of these potential, these potential costs to the residents that didn't already have a second meter? Lastly, I'd ask the city if the charge for the basic monthly service charge for the sprinkler system in a month when no irrigation is water is used, so would you charge that monthly fee when no irrigation water is used? Is a question. Something that could happen in the winter months. Have you all considered that? And if that's your plan, how do you justify charging in that case? Sorry for the long read, but these are comments that I think people are interested in. I certainly am, and I look forward to hearing from y'all on those. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Fred. The next comment card I have is from Kim Clemens.
Well, he said it all, so I think I'm shit. No, I do agree with a lot of what she said. So I appreciate all of your time. I know it's, it's not an easy position for any of us to sit here today. I spent some time with Ms. Patty and Taryn, I believe is your name. Thank you for your assistance today. I appreciate you. I can only imagine the amount of calls and the flack that you've gotten recently. So I appreciate you. I can attest to some of what Mr. Fred was saying earlier. If we look at our May-June bill of this last year and our September-October bill, one was 17,000 gallons, the next one was 19,000 gallons. There was a $204 difference between 2,000 gallons of water. That, to me, is a major swing. In my household, I don't know what everybody else's finances look like, but that's, that's off putting to us as a resident. We knew, you know, we heard the city of Houston a year and a half ago stating that their water bills were going to increase within their city. We knew that was going to impact us at some point. How that was pushed out to our city, I don't know. I don't know what the number figures were to look like or how we should have accepted it or received it, this, that, and the other. But to me, that was, that was a big number that we're starting to see, and it seemed a little aggressive for what we're experiencing currently. What are we, as a city, trying to do to help mitigate those costs to us as neighbors, as, you know, people who love to live in Jersey Village? We don't, we live here because we like it, and we're here to find an answer. We're not here to fight or to pick and poke and prod. We need to learn to work together as a unit and, you know, depend, you know, rely on each other's experience. You know, a lot of us have maintenance backgrounds and can have sources in different, you know, places to look to find some, you know, ways to save our city money to where we don't have to face these big impact of cost. So what can, A, what can we do as citizens to help you guys? And then how does a city try to avoid, you know, can we buy chemicals in bulk? The sewer versus the water rate is just, it doesn't look right on paper. If you go back and you look at it, it's just, $165 sewer bill or water bill versus a $220 sewage. If that water is running off, why would we be paying more money for chemicals? You know, if that's just sitting in our water, going in the grass, maybe better explain it to the city, you know, to the community because it's not being conveyed correctly. And you guys shouldn't be targets, you know, and I don't want it to seem that way. We've got to figure out how to communicate what's going on better to the citizens. It's only going to help the long run. So, I mean, that's, that's my current pains. And again, you know, what can we do to help you guys? Because whatever's happening now, it's, it's not effective and it's, it's irritating at best. So I appreciate everything you do, all of you. I want you to know that. It's not easy to sit up there in those chairs. So let's work together. Let's try to figure it out. Appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you very much. And the last comment card I have is from Judy Yarbury.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. Got to agree 100% with Fred as well as his fantastic delivery of the message, as well as Kim. First of all, we do love living in the city of JV. Secondly, we acknowledge that it is necessary at times to have a rate increase. It's part of doing business. It's the cost of living, et cetera. I think what we're concerned about is, first of all, we are going to have to get a second meter. We acknowledge that and have to bite the bullet on the cost of the plumbing, et cetera. But I think what really got us is the double whammy. That's the term my husband used. Not only did you eliminate the average sewer billing process, but then you socked us with a pretty good rate increase versus maybe, as Fred mentioned, something maybe less aggressive to still meet your long-term objectives. And the only other observation I had was in the past, any kind of water or sewage rate increases were done by an outside firm that possibly could be somewhat more objective and gather the same kind of data. And if, in fact, the findings were equal to those of the city managers, notifying and preparing citizens for what to expect before we get hit with these secondary to the error, the clerical error, still a pretty big hickey for a lot of people in JV. So I hope you take some of these things under consideration because, as Kim said, you've got a tough job. I wouldn't want to be sitting in your shoes. But there's got to be a better way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Judy. And to be clear, those are the only comment cards that I had. Was there anyone who submitted a comment card who didn't hear their name called? Okay, just wanted to be sure. So that brings us to the next item on our agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action concerning water meter readings and accuracy testing. Michelle Mitchum, Mayor Pro Tem. Michelle? And I don't know if it got picked up on. That's all right. I can, I can just summarize it real quick, and this would be particularly germane to anyone who spoke, who was hoping to have some real direct answers to some of your concerns regarding billing. Because of the way that the agenda item was worded, it does say concerning water meter readings and accuracy testing. So unfortunately, we're, we're really only going to be able to speak at any length to issues that directly concern water meter reading and accuracy because that's the, the issue that was brought to council. So obviously, there will be an item on next week's agenda that will allow us to go into much more detail on that. So Mayor Pro Tem?
We, to clarify that, like Judy's comment, I can make statements of fact, right? Because she asked a question about the recent water study, a recent impact in utility rate study that we did that in-house. My fact reply to that is that it was based on a study that was done out, outside of the city, and there was revision of numbers due to the inflation.
Yes. A statement of fact and on to, on to citizen comments, you can do it, but just keep it minimal. But then as far as the discussion for this item, it's related to the meter readings and accuracy. And again, understood that rates are a big part of that, but just keep your comments limited.
Okay.
Before we get, sorry, before we get started, Austin is here, and I know everybody out there can't see him, but is there, can we get him projected if he's going to attend the meeting or speak?
I don't know if we're going to be able to. I mean, it, we, I don't know how long it would take to do that, but.
I don't really think it, in terms of whether it needs to be legal or not, it's okay with him to do this. If it would have been a council meeting, I think it would have had to been projected. Is that correct?
So just for, for open meetings purposes, he doesn't have to be projected like a council person would, but I mean, if it's capable and.
I didn't mean from legal standpoint. It was more the fact that if he's going to be contributing to the conversation, it's just a random voice for everybody else. That's not, we can see him on this up here, but it's not projected.
I, I'm, I'm good with the way it is. I mean, he's, he's here to provide, I mean, we're ultimately the ones that need to discuss this issue. He's here in case we need some information from him. And so I think that's, that's the important thing. For me personally, that's just my take on it, but.
Is it possible?
Does anyone else have any, any other preliminaries they want to cover before?
Well, Austin's right here. He's wearing a lovely blue sweater. He's got, he's, there he is. He did, he did turn around.
Well, I wanted to start off by saying thank you so much for everybody coming in such short notice. It was, you know, on the JV news page over and over, and this is an issue that I feel like we've heard a few weeks in a row now. And really with me, I just felt like if I've learned anything in life is people don't like surprises. And I feel like this was, whether it's right or wrong or correctable, or it was a surprise. And what gave me heartburn about it, it was a surprise right before the holidays. And people only have one, you know, two, three paychecks before Christmas comes, and I didn't want, you know, this to be perceived as something, like something that was not fixable. So it's brought, my, my little statement is, I would like to enter a discussion regarding water bills. It was brought to council's attention that many residents found an unexpected higher bill. I would like to analyze possible factors that contributed to the higher bills, including but not limited to the recent adjustments from water and sewage separation, water and sewer rate changes, removing the average rating system for bills, and the possibility of there being another unknown factor. So for us to have a discussion, as much as I would love to go back and forth on the JV news page, but for us to talk cohesively, unfortunately, this is the only way I could do it. And it seemed important enough from, I mean, it wasn't one or two people. I think I've got 17 emails of y'all graciously who sent me your water bills to analyze. And that's not even the other ones that you have gotten. So it was enough of a surprise to, I would say, enough of the city of Jersey Village. I felt like this was a necessary meeting, so I appreciate it. Everybody's been gracious and kind in the emails, and I think that we, like Kim couldn't have said it better, that we all, we love living here and we just want to make sure that we're, you know, coming together and, and making it happen. So this is my discussion.
Okay. Discussion amongst council on this item.
So I think, for me, one of the biggest things is, is I have concerns that the meters are not reading accurately consistently. I think that's probably the best way to describe it. I'm finding examples of people where their historical usage will be one thing. There will be a month where it is super high, and then it's back down to their normal usage, and it continues. And I understand the city's first, first thought there is clearly you have some kind of plumbing issue. But then you hear people saying, well, we have a plumber out. There's no, there's no leaks. There's nothing. And then if your rate goes back down, to me, that, or I'm sorry, your usage goes back down, that leaks don't fix themselves. So to me, that is not, that does not show that somebody used that much water or that they're actually, you know, that they have a leak. I just, I think we need to have something in place or some type of recourse for a citizen other than having a, to what I think is honestly possibly a faulty meter tested, and then having to pay for it when it comes back as it's just fine. I think it's a little frustrating from a citizen standpoint when you walk out to your beater in the ground and you look out and the numbers on that meter are nowhere on your bill. They're nowhere to be seen. It doesn't make sense. Your water rate is not on your bill, so you don't know where, you know, what you're actually charged for is not on your bill. So I think that's just very confusing because you can't reconcile that with your meter, right? You know, I understand the, you know, you used to go out and you look at your meter and you make sure what's on your meter is what's on your bill. And you're like, all right, that's what it is. It does, it's not like that anymore. I'd also like to point out that if you look at the city of Houston this last month at their council meeting, they had several people there, including the media, complaining about inaccurate meter readings. And the city of Houston finally acknowledged that they realized there is a problem. I believe they use the same type of meters we do, and said that they are looking for, they are going to come up with a solution for these inaccuracies because people realize there's, there's something to it. I mean, I'm not smart enough to tell you what that something is, but I'm smart enough to realize that something's not right.
Yeah, it's too many patterns of, of errors. It's too many patterns. It was, it's not just one or two. It's just.
This, the city of Houston still uses manual meter reading process on some of their meters. They're not fully.
But it's not all of theirs. And if you looked back at the, if you actually look at where it was, it was in areas where they've rolled out the new meters where they're having the issues. So it's more in the Kingwood area. It's also more of in that section that goes out towards Katy. It's not Katy, but it's, you gotta look. It's, but it's in the area where they're using the new meters.
I'm not familiar, so can't talk on that anyway, but meter accuracy, the meters that we use are proven to be very accurate. We have had numerous people pay for testing and have not found failures in the meter's accuracy. There was a top, the subject brought up. have not found failures in the meters accuracy. There was a top, the subject brought up that you have an average use, and then a month it does, jumps up, and then we go back to average use. Well, Austin was kind enough to provide us with a data set that had more than 110,000 records of water readings. And I crunched those numbers and used some code to do a lot of mathematics on them, and calculated the average household gallons used per month for residential house, and then went month by month, looking to compare that month's usage against the average for that house for that year, and found 24 instances within the last three years, the last two years, where there was a jump, and it went back down. Almost every one of the 24, I could attribute to irrigation systems, based on the time of the month, time of the year, and the rainfall in that year, in that month. I don't think we have a huge problem with inaccurate meters. I'm happy to entertain any more evidence to the contrary, but the math doesn't show that. I still have two houses that I can't quite understand why. One of them was someone that you brought to me, that I can't explain why their water bill is what it is. But it does not seem to be a widespread problem when you have 24 houses, 24 instances across the entire city for 24 months.
I feel like I've gotten more than 24 emails that have an inaccuracy. And I understand that the math, but if it's an inaccurate reading, the math would check out. Like, because it would present with fake numbers, or like, numbers that weren't accurate. So then if you did averages, you're averaging this false reading, which in, I don't know, I don't even know if I'm making sense. But I'm seeing, like, it wouldn't surprise me that if you did analytics, and you didn't come up with something that stuck out, because it's an intermittent issue, and it's random.
That was exactly what I was looking for, was something that's intermittent. Because that's why I calculated the average water use across a whole, we're in 10 months now, so 10 months, which include non-irrigation and irrigation months, because most people, your water usage is real low in January, February, March. Just learned that this weekend. So your average usage was pretty low. Most JV residents are only using 6,000 to 7,000 gallons a month. And then I compared those months against your average. So if there's a sudden jump, that would pop out. And it did pop out 24 times. I forgot, you mentioned that water bills don't have, the numbers don't match. It has a beginning and ending reading, and then a usage. That beginning and ending reading is on the meter. It's one of the two data points that it flashes.
But I'm telling you, when you go out to your meter, it does not show what is on that paper.
You're saying that if you were to go on the day that they read the meter, that they go around and scan the meter, you're saying that the number that comes up on the bill is not the same on that day?
No, I'm saying the numbers don't, the numbers don't necessarily match in any way. I don't think it matters when you go. Have you ever looked at, I mean, when's the last time you've actually gone out and looked at your meter?
Yesterday.
And you're telling me yours was in line with what your last bill was?
Yes. The first flash that it gives, it gives you your meter reading, which is going to, fills the hole, I think, like 10 digits. Most of those are going to be zeros. And the last bit, mine's 294 and 297 with the last readings. And it shows a 297 or 298, just right in line with my recent usage. The irrigation meter hasn't been used in 18 months. It still matches. The second data point that flashes, which is very useful to people, is it gives you the meter reading, and then it gives you a flow rate. Go turn off everything in your house, and you should have a 0.0 flow rate. If you don't, you may have something you want to look at.
And just to circle back around, because I don't want this sort of float out there and turn into a thing. The City of Houston, I assume you're talking about the issues they had back in April and May that were reported?
No, 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 like this last month. That's a different issue that was corrected. That was a, like a technical.
I just Googled for it, and the only things I saw that popped up were the issues from several months ago. So this.
It was on, it was on the news. Drew and I spoke about it. It's, it was last month, or maybe technically, no, it was last month. It was October.
I'll step in real quick. One, I failed, because I meant to go look at my meter today and look at this stuff. And I probably would have been up heads or tails without James's tutorial. So thank you. Is there a third flash, by the way, James? Or is it just two? Just two. Robert, I don't think, or Austin, I don't think we have anything on our website yet, kind of about how people could read their own meters. Is that possible to put up in the next month or so? Because I think that would be useful for people. And obviously, billing is in arrears. So people, when they see what their usage was, it may not be instant. And it may be, you know, you have to add a week or two weeks of usage to see how accurate that is. But it should be around there, right? I mean, so I think it would be helpful if people are able to track that and do their own meter reading on a weekly basis, just to kind of keep, keep track. And I like the flow rate idea as well. Just, it's probably more environmentally sound than doing a bucket test.
Is there not a way, so when we get our water from the City of Houston, and maybe this is a better question for Robert, when our water comes in from the City of Houston, is there some main line that we get that from with a large meter for us, that, where we're, like the City of Jersey Village is getting charged?
Yes.
Is that how that works? I mean, I'm imagining this in my head with zero knowledge of how any of that stuff works. So if I'm making sense here, so if, does the water that we're all using individually, that what we're billing for, if you take that and you look backwards, is the amount of usage everybody's using that you're getting off of the meters, matching what we are pulling from the City of Houston? Does that align? And how can I see that data? I would like to see that data. How can I do that?
I think that was in the data that you just sent us, because all the municipal meters were in there. And I filtered it out, but I think that you already sent it to us.
No, no, I'm not talking about a math project. I want to see actual, the number, I want it printed on one page. I want to see what have we used in the last three months? Those meter readings, the City of Houston, what we're being charged for versus the usage from all of our, like, residential, commercial, because I know it's not just residential, residential and commercial usage. Are we actually zeroing out there? Or is that number, I want to see that those numbers zero out. Does that make sense? Because then to me, that would tell me whether or not we're getting accurate meter readings, if, are we charging people and businesses for more water usage than what we're actually taking?
I see what you're saying.
Does that make sense? It makes sense up here, but it may not make sense out here.
No, no, that's a common utility practice, that I know gas and electric do. I was not thinking that you would have to do the math. I agree.
No, and I want to do, I'm not going to, I'm sorry, but I'm not paid for this job, so I'm not doing the work either. I want it pulled for me, and I want to see it.
No, I agree. They should do that.
So your expectation is that the amount pulled from City of Houston would be greater than or equal to, sorry, I knew there should.
For what we're charging, for what we're trying to, what we're showing is being used to our residents and commercial, I mean, for whomever. I understand that, like, we're our own customer as well. Like, and I understand there's a portion for that, but we should be able to zero that out from city meters.
You won't zero out completely because of water main breaks, but hopefully, we've accounted for that.
But I would think that that should be a line item, right? Where it's like X amount of usage, or whatever. Because if you can measure them through sub-meters, which I'm assuming we have, meters from different points, we can align where water's coming from. So is that actually zeroing out or not?
Well, so if there's a main break, it's not, it's being metered when it comes into the city from the interconnect with the City of Houston. It's not being metered when it, when that loss occurs, because.
And I don't think, and I don't want to get lost on a tangent. I want to see the numbers that we get from the City of Houston. And I want to see the combined numbers from residents and commercial districts, including ourselves. And I'd like to see that that's on track. Because to me, that right there would be one indication, whether or not we're having accurate meter readings from residents. Because if there's a significant difference there, we should be able to see it. And as far as water breaks, if the line at Jersey and, or Lakeview in Philippine breaks, I would assume that that has to go through something before we get to it. And maybe not. I don't know. But we should see something somewhere.
If it's in our part of the line, no. You will only see what came in from the City of Houston, but it will not have gone into a customer's meter. Because now, if a customer's line breaks, yes, it will show up on their.
Right. But either way, what we pull in from City of Houston should be greater than or equal to the usage that we're billing for. I mean, there's probably some well involved in there somewhere, but that, like you said, that could probably be easily.
And I would like to see that on paper. And I would like that to be something, and I don't know if this is qualified for public viewing, as long as there's no public information or personal information. Is that not something that can be posted online for everybody to see and make their own conclusions about?
The other thing also?
Yeah. There's a lot of stuff on utility bills themselves that are expressly confidential. But if you're talking about general, like, data sets, that would be something that would be available for public viewing.
The other thing, and I don't know how much this factors into it, the other thing you have to take into account as well, is going to be anytime we flush our hydrants, then that's going to be a loss that's not metered.
I understand that. But to me, there should be, there should be consistencies, right? And to me, that tells me when there's significant difference there, that tells me we should never be, we should never be benefiting from this, right? Like, it should never come from, it should never come, it should never, it should never be pushed under the residence.
I agree.
And that's all I want, I just want to see it in paper. And I'm not assuming that anything's wrong. I just, I would like to see that on paper.
Yeah, we can look at that. I just want to make sure that we, when we look at the numbers, that we know that we have those caveats in mind. And I don't know how much water we're talking about, that when you flush a water main, how much water that is, or if there's a good way to even get an estimate. Because we do have, I'll tell you this much, when we have customers who complain regarding smells in their water, or anything along those lines, one of the very first things that we look at, once the customer's kind of done what they could to reasonably eliminate issues on their end, is to flush the water line. It's not uncommon. And so I just want to make sure that we have a reasonable understanding as to.
And I understand that. But I'm just, I just feel like if we're trying to be transparent, like we claim to do, and we do, like Jersey Village, we're big on transparency, then let's, let's look at it. I mean, that's something for people to see. Let's give a little more confidence to it. Because I know, I understand, I feel like I am probably one of only, probably the only person here that thinks there's a problem with the meters, and that's fine. But there are only two people here that think there's a problem with some of the meters. But, you know, I think we need to do this. And I think it's justifiable.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't publish that information. I'm just, again.
It's not going to be accurate.
Well, the problem's going to be that it's, as soon as the numbers don't add up, we need to be, we need to be prepared.
I don't expect it to be zero, zero. We're not saying that.
They might not be wrong, so it is not going to show them.
Can Austin answer?
Yeah, please, Austin, sorry.
So that is something we have tracked. It's probably been a few months since we've
updated it. One of the issues that we've had with our water meter from the City of Houston, is that the meter went bad. And so they estimated our billing for a while as well. We've been pushing under a new meter, and I think that was in as well. But back when the meter did work, and we had everything, I don't recall seeing anything where we billed more than we took in. I could be wrong. It's been a while since I looked at that spreadsheet. But I certainly understand the point that you're trying to make. And that is a spreadsheet that we've had updated in the past. It's probably been September since I've, longer than that I looked at it. But I know we update it regularly.
Austin, you said that the City of Houston had to estimate it, because the meter failed. Did it fail in our favor or theirs? No, it's always going to, no, I read some really awesome white papers about meters, and when you're supposed to replace them. And they tend to favor the customer. It's not the utility that it normally favors.
Right. I think it just stopped reading, which would be in our favor. But then they estimate the billing, which.
Yep. The meters read either mechanically, or electrically, or through photo, really interesting photo technology. But there's studies on when you're supposed to replace meters, because they tend to fail in favor of the customer. It's not that they bill, they track more usage. They almost always fail to track usage. And so it's a lower reading than what it's supposed to be.
So you don't see any irony at all, in the fact that, as a city, we have a failed meter, and that there couldn't be a problem with other people with their meters?
That meter probably hasn't been replaced in a long, long time. And it probably failed in our favor in this whole thing.
Failed in a favor, not a favor, it's still.
I just want to see it on paper, guys. That's all I'm asking for.
It's dripping with irony, in probably a number of different ways. I was going to ask Robert or Austin, speaking, when a meter fails, or doesn't work, or we don't, when we would drive around the truck and collect them, and we miss, something happens and we don't get it for an address, we probably, what is our recourse? What are, from a city point of view?
Miss a reading.
So if we miss a reading, we read the second month. We don't miss readings, correct?
I can't hear any of that.
So what we would do is, if we missed the reading with the machine we use, we would send a manual read out there. And we haven't missed a reading. Like, we haven't missed a manual, correct?
So we would send the guys out there to go do a manual read, and then at that point, that's the reading I would put into the billing for that month.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we did estimates, or anything like that.
That was another thing I looked at. And that is, I can't say that's happened 115 times. What I can say is that it's happened a maximum of 115 times. Because I went and looked at every house that had a zero reading, three months in a row, what was the next reading? For the massive majority of these 115 instances, that next reading was less, was zero or less than five gallons, 5,000 gallons. There was one house that I'm sure contacted all of us. And I told that person they needed to talk to Austin, because I think their billing was unfair. They missed, for some whatever reason, the meter did not get read three months in a row. And they got hit with more than 50,000 gallons billed. And when you go back and, when you look at their average usage, it's their average usage across the whole month. For some reason, it wasn't caught. And I think the city will be able to rectify that. There's adjustments, the city manager's got some authority on that. I think he should address that one. But that was not anywhere near the norm.
But I didn't, of all the ones I got from people, when they were sending in copies of their bills and things like that, and hand-delivered, I got a few of those. I didn't see any that had zero readings for months. My own personal one, I had on two months for a remodel, where we cut the main, we had the main shut off. So that, to me, is expected. But I didn't see anybody where they had zeros on theirs. Now, in the document, yes. I'm talking about people with complaints, like, recent complaints. I know, I saw no zero usages.
To circle back to the main reason I called the meeting, is I still would like to talk about the patterns of inconsistencies. And I think that, I mean, just, if the City of Houston is having a problem with these meters, and they just passed something to help their citizens, I mean, like, what are the odds that we are having the exact same problem here? Like, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it probably is a duck. So at least, in the very least, I feel like it's something that we need to explore. And that's what I would like to talk about, is I am not a meter specialist in any way. I don't know how one goes about testing the accuracy for meters. So I would like to discuss just what are the options of testing the accuracy of meters, without pulling old data. Because honestly, if I think the meters are inaccurate, I don't really care about old data as much, because that could be inaccurate. I want to test the meters now. Test them, sorry, not test them.
How many have we tested already? I know we looked at, we changed the price because there was so many testing. How much?
We added a price we used to not charge for it.
Yeah, the city pays $100 to test a meter on site. Typically, we'll test it on site with the resident. They like to be there. So we test it on site with them. Of the ones we tested, we haven't had any fail. They're also tested before. They're also tested before they leave the factory. Um, I learned that meters typically 15 to 20 years, our meters were installed in 2018.
I'm sorry, that's correct. We were not charging because we were offering that as a service, and they had to pay in the backend if it failed. And everyone was having to pay, pay because it was always passing. So now we charge upfront.
I mean, just to be clear, I, and I, and I apologize if this gets said often, but I think it's important to point this out because I, 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 when people think about things like the general fund, and they look at things that the city spends money on, you know, there's a discussion to be had about, well, we would pay less in taxes if there weren't this many expenditures. It's a little different when you're talking about the utility fund, because the utility fund is only used for one purpose, and that's to provide safe, clean drinking water to folks in the city, to customers, and to make sure that wastewater is removed in a sanitary manner. Those, that is it. It's not like a HUD where they do those things, plus they provide some security, plus they provide parks and other things. It is one purpose and one purpose only. And every dollar that we spend out of that to do something has to be paid for somewhere. And so when we're talking, you know, at the end of the day, we're really not talking about, you know, whether these expenditures are going to be made or not in terms of investment in our, our water and sewer, or, I mean, really, the only expenditures we're talking about is if we were suddenly saying, okay, we're going to test all of these water meters, well, that money comes from somewhere. And it's either going to come from the person who is saying that there is a problem with their water meter, or we're all going to pay for it, one way or another. Uh, it's, it's, in all of these discussions, we're really talking about the best, you know, the fairest way to deal with issues like this when they come up. So, um, on, on the accuracy issue, I just, real quickly, I'm, I, I, I'm more than happy for us to look into the city of Houston issue, to see what it is. I'm trying up here on the spot to find something, and I can't find anything. Um, so you sent it to me? Okay.
The, the only things I found on the city of Houston are that they've had issues estimating the water bills. And when they don't get a meter reading, they estimate the bill, and that's where the issues are coming from. That's the only thing I've found in, in the last few weeks, anyway, trying to do the research here.
Sorry, hold on, I'm pulling up this. So, yeah, first of all, yeah, to emphasize, I think what, and I apologize, Austin, it was, I was trying to do two things at once. I think you were talking about the estimated water meters versus actual readings. So, yeah, we, my understanding is at least when there's an issue that comes up, if somebody has either, because we did have somebody last, this last billing period that came, had a zero on their usage, and they notified the city, and somebody was sent out, and they went and reread it. If anyone ever feels like, for example, Councilmember McCray mentioned an issue where they felt like the number that was showing up on their meter wasn't matching up with what was on their bill, absolutely, that's something you can ask the city to come out and look at, and that doesn't cost anything. Because they're not testing the meter. If, if you think for some reason that the meter was misread, then absolutely, they can send someone out, and it, I don't think it takes very long at all for them to be able to take a look at it, whether it's a manual read or whether it's using the, the reader device. Uh, but, but obviously, we want to make sure we get that right as soon as possible. Uh, some of the issues the city of Houston has run into is because of the estimated readings and messing that up. Because they actually, at least, the prior issue from several months ago was not that, that the meters weren't reading correctly the amount of water. It was that.
That's not the issue.
And I'm, 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 sorry, I'm trying to do multiple things at once, so I have not yet had a chance to read the whole thing. But I know that at least back in April and May, the issue was the method they had for reading the meters failed, and then they estimated the, the bills, which, which is what caused that problem. So y'all pick up the conversation. I'm going to quickly figure this out.
Real quick, Robert, um, or Austin, what is the timeline on, uh, the new infrastructure that will help provide almost instantaneous usage amounts?
So that install date's tomorrow, and the install's tomorrow, then there will be some, you know, internal, uh, work on that um, to get onboarded, and we're, we're hoping for early January.
So what will that provide?
Yeah, essentially, it'll be instantaneous, uh, data reads. Um, if there were, if there was an issue with the antenna, then we would have to manually reread until we swapped out the antenna, which we do have a plan in place to quickly identify the antenna issues and, and then fix those once we are onboarded.
So if someone wants to know what their usage was from now, over the last 30 minutes, they can save themselves two trips to their meter, like James did yesterday, and they can get it online? If, essentially?
Yes, they should be able to get it instantaneous. Getting that dashboard online would, we could probably have to look into making that happen.
That'd be awesome. It'd be a good way of tracking things.
If the meters are accurate. I mean, that's, and I, and I think for a lot, most, I'll be honest, I think, I mean, my opinion, I think for most people, they are. But I don't, I do think we have, um, I think we have more people than we realize that think, that there's either, that there's some kind of an issue with the meter. And I don't know if it's the meter itself, if it's the way that they are read. I don't know if it's, I don't know any of those things, but I do think there's some kind of an issue. Have we thought about having somebody from outside of the city come in to take a look at this?
Isn't the meter testing done outside?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's out, it's outside, third party.
I meant talking about, like, testing every single meter. I mean, looking at the problem as a whole and seeing what's going on. I mean, last I checked, none of us here, what is that, that type of engineer, whatever that is. But I would think that there are people that specialize in this and understand how these things work and could evaluate whether or not there are actual inconsistencies in here versus us being armchair quarterbacks up here trying it ourselves.
After spending probably 30 hours this weekend looking through all of this, before I'm willing to go out and hire anybody to look at it, I would like a really well-defined problem that we're trying to get them to answer. Because I don't think we have anywhere near a well-defined problem.
I feel like we have a very well-defined problem. People are feeling like an inaccurate spike in their bill where they can't account for it on a leak, and then, I mean, they, they, we literally got, I feel like we have a very well-defined problem.
They also, I think, most people, the biggest complaint with the meters is that there's no recourse for when they disagree other than having that meter tested in a way that they don't clearly understand. And it may not, and it, it's clearly never going to look, it's not, they're not showing up that there's problems in that capacity. I mean, I know we've talked both, I mean, I know the conversation has been brought up before about, well, if you feel like your electrical bill is wrong, who do you disagree with? But this isn't electrical bills. These are utility bills, and this is something we can do something about. I feel like we owe it to people to come up with something here.
And the Houston Public Works Department published that the 0.8% of the bills came back inaccurate. And so, I mean, that's not a huge number, but I feel like that is also about what we're getting.
Well, I'm going to reach out to the Houston Public Works Department tomorrow. I don't know if I'll get an answer this week. Uh, but I do have a contact there, and I want to find out a little bit more. I'm reading this article you sent, Councilmember McCray. They do talk a lot about sort of the, I mean, I understand, consumer reporters, this is what they do. They focus on the human element. There is no mention as to what caused the issues with, that, there's zero mention of the meters.
The first one I could find sitting up here, because my city stuff isn't working.
So, so I want to make sure.
And I understand that, but I would ask you, also, reach out to Houston City Council versus just Public Works, because I feel like you get, maybe have two different viewpoints there. You get citizen input versus just worker input.
I can certainly do that. Uh, but, but the, the key here is I want to make sure that we are focusing on, and I, to James's point, because I think you bring a very good point up, which is if we start hiring consultants to look at an undefined problem, you're going to have a very undefined bill. The, the issue, we can't, just going off a feeling, I think, is not going to be good enough. We have to be able to narrow this down. Um, Councilmember McCray talked about the, the meters being, it's you versus the meter. Uh, yes, I mean, I think you probably just described, I don't know how long water meters have been in use, certainly longer than I've been alive. I would venture to guess maybe longer than all of us have been alive. Water meters have, have been, at least at some capacity, been used to measure, um,
So then what would you say? Let me ask you this. So what would you say? So a person receives an outrageously high water bill showing outrageously high usage. They call the city and they have their meter tested. Everything's fine there. They call out a plumber, and a plumber tells them there's no leaks here. They have their house pressure tested. They have their irrigation system pressure tested. Everything comes back negative, and it comes down to a plumber telling them, you're screwed, good luck, because there's nothing showing here for that usage. So what, what do you do as a resident? As a person sitting there going, this is not right. I'm being stuck with a bill that I can prove I don't have, I didn't use. What, what do I, what do you do about it? I don't think it's okay to just tell people, oh, well.
No, and I'm not telling people, oh, well.
0.08 of a problem.
No, 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 I, I, and, and, and to be clear, I'm not saying, oh, well. You know, oh, oh, well is the, is the terrible flip side of, I feel there's a problem, but I don't have anything substantive to be able to really put my, my thumb on. Any issue like this, I think, and again, I'm, I'm not an engineer either, so, uh, you know, I, I just, you know, hear from them a lot, uh, in, in, in my line of work. You have to look at these things systematically. It's the only way you can even come close to, to figuring out the issue. If, obviously, if the meter is being tested and it's coming back accurate, that's not to say that that is 100% conclusive that there is no issue with the meter. But at that point, you're talking about something that I think if there were a big, and, and that's why I want to talk to the city of Houston, because I want to see, are there other municipalities having an issue with this? Uh, I don't even know if they have the exact same brand of meter that we do or not. Uh, it may be a completely, completely different brand. But the, the greater likelihood is, because you want to go with the things that seem more likely, and the things that are probably a little bit easier to check, is trying to identify when those usages are happening, and trying to determine if there is some kind of usage that's happening. Is there a, a water being left on? Is, is there a leaky toilet? Is there some other loss of water that's happening in order to cause that? It, I mean, that's really the only thing you can do at that point. You know, the only other thing that we can do, and luckily, I, I think this is going to be implemented here in the next couple of weeks, at least last time I, I spoke to Austin about it, the, um, the live meter reading, where customers can go and check at any moment. Goes on in January, thank you, Drew. The, that hopefully will provide an opportunity for people to, instead of weeks after they get a bill that says that they had some sort of massive usage, that they can be notified, I, I assume there's an app or something that would be linked up with this. But hopefully, it will be able to provide cus, provide residents with an ability to be notified right away as soon as that meter says, hey, there's use, usage right now, to then go around and see if you can identify something. Do you see water coming out somewhere? Do you see, uh, do you hear a toilet that's running? Whatever the case may be. Because there are, you know, there are tons of studies out there that have looked at loss of water in houses, and you'd be shocked at how much water you can lose from a leaky toilet. I mean, it's, it's, it's very easy for that to happen. So, uh, you know, those are the things that need to be checked first. Now, if, if they do all of those things, and we implement this system and that still doesn't help them to pinpoint it, then we'll go back and revisit it. I'm never going to say no, that it can't possibly be the meter, but I, I, I think we need to, there are known causes for these sorts of things that we have to, to, to start looking at much more closely. And unfortunately, that's not an easy conversation to have in a broad manner. Uh, it is a case by case, customer by customer situation.
So your suggestion is just let's get the new meters and ignore all the complaints we've got so far?
No, that's what it sounded like to me, is we'll get new meters and then we'll address the problem. No.
I have a problem with this theory is that, yeah, I agree, running toilets, all that, yada, 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 that happens, and that can't account for things. But if this was likely the issue, then this would be, over the year, consistent, right? Because what are the odds that everybody magically has a leaky toilet or a leaky this at the same time? Like, we have, we do have the data, this isn't a feeling that I have, a feeling that I called a meeting. I have the data. I have the numbers in front of me. I have all of the citizens who are flooding the page of, this seems weird, this seems weird. Um, here are my numbers, here, I'm going to give you my bill. I have data. I have numbers. I don't have feelings. I mean, I do have feelings about the numbers, but this isn't on a whim. And if, if it was due to everyday, normal stuff, we would have seen this pattern in a year, not all concentrated in this month. And then coupled with the fact that, like I said, the city of Houston is having this exact same issue, I think it's something that we should explore. And I think you saying, well, maybe that we, we might not find something, therefore, let's just not spend the money, doesn't seem like we're listening to these people that we're trying to solve their problems. It's, that that seems like a very isolated. I'm going to recommend that we have a work session to talk more in depth about this because it's very difficult in this format to go through data that we have and to walk through suggestions or thoughts on how we might want to go about putting a process together that makes more sense for addressing these anomalies when they come up. So I, I think that would be.
I think that's a great idea. I totally agree, Sheri. I think that would be fantastic. But I do think we need to discuss, um, for anybody's whose usage was significantly out of range this last month. I don't think we should attempt to, um, penalize them for that bill until we come up with a solution.
Are we talking this past, past month, or the last 12, 12 months, 24 months? Because, because there's a lot of examples out there.
No, I understand. I'm, this is off the top of my head, but I think it's something that we need to talk about because I don't think that's, I mean, one of the examples I sent you that I was given permission to share, um, you know, my neighbor is 99 years old and has an almost $800 water bill. He doesn't drink the city water. He does not do anything. That is absolutely insane.
And that's not month after month? That's here and there?
That is, he, it's bizarre. And I sent that information to y'all, and I know, I mean, it's, it does not make sense. It is a major anomaly, and.
I looked at his, because his is the one that I can't figure out. But the usage is fairly consistently high. He got hit with a new really high water bill this time because of the way we changed the billing. The, the usage is constantly.
He had usage, one, it was consistently over the years, 5, 5, 5, 21, or 32. I mean, that's not, that's not consistent. I would not call that consistent. I think it's the stuff like that that we need to be addressing. I also agree, since we are talking about water meters, um, we need to stop charging for them for a usage fee when they're not being used. I don't think that we should be charging for that. A person comes down to City Hall and buys the second meter, that we've told them that there's a better option for a lot of people. Some people it is, some people it's not, it depends on your usage. But we're charging them every month, even when they buy it, and they're just waiting, getting quotes from a plumber. We're, we're charging them for that. It doesn't cost, I mean, I don't understand what the city is doing.
We, we want to make sure we bring this back to what we have on the agenda, which is.
Water meters?
Meter readings and accuracy.
Yeah, so I don't.
So I, 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 I'm, I, listen, I have no, well, first of all, I want to make sure that we are on the up and up when it comes to, to state law.
That's what Justin's here for.
I, I, but I think, Justin, would you agree that we're, that that's getting off track?
I mean, this, in, in my opinion, as long as you're talking about water meters.
There we go, water meters. We're charging for usage of a meter that is sitting on someone's counter.
I gave a statement in the beginning to Lori and, and everything that could encompass this, so we would be covered. And she just confirmed.
Okay, I, I agree that nothing is going to get accomplished tonight regarding any of those issues. Councilmember Shepherd, I do agree with you. I think a work session is going to be needed. And number one, in order for us to be able to have the time to, I, I'm glad that, that Councilmember Singleton had time to be able to go through the data we were provided on Saturday. I know I did not. Not, not to the detail that I felt like I would be able to come in and, and be able to have a, a good comprehensive discussion regarding the data. Uh, it would be good to have an opportunity to be able to look through that data, to be able to have discussion with staff, to get a better idea about what, 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 what have we looked at in terms of some of these more prominent issues? Uh, or what, what, what have we learned about some of these cases? Uh, what's been eliminated as a cause or what, what hasn't been? So that we can at least start to narrow down the issue. And also give us an opportunity to, to do some of that other research as far as whatever issues the city of Houston is having recently, to see if that is a potential source of, of the issue. But, but, but I think before we go and say we are going to spend $100,000 plus on a consultant.
No one said that. I don't think, I don't recall stating that.
This was a meeting because we couldn't legally. This was a meeting because we couldn't legally speak on the page, that needed to happen to make everybody feel heard. I understood we were not going to make a decision tonight, but it was to get the discussion going, to create a meeting where it could happen.
So, but, but my point being that I do think we need to narrow the scope down of the issue before we go and look at hiring any kind of outside, outside consultant, so...
When can I expect that information I asked for? Do you have an idea of how long it'll take to get that? But Austin, Robert, y'all, I don't know.
We have, we have a spreadsheet that has water use versus water loss that we prepare annually for the Texas Water Board, so we just have to update that, and we could have that pretty, pretty soon.
Can we do it by, I'd like it by month versus annually, if we can do it, month for what we are charged for usage, or whatever our usage is, what we're charged for gallons, and then what we are saying people are using, or consumers consuming. I want to see those numbers.
Yeah, for sure.
So about making decisions, I have vocalized my thoughts on water meter readings, but others, there seems to be some doubt about mo, water meter readings, so in the subject of water meter readings, and that everybody got unexpected bills, do we have to have a formalized resolution to ask the city manager to waive late fees for this month? Can that just be something that we all give him feedback on? Because I would like to look at just waiving late fees because of the amount of impact it had.
Yeah, so, so the council can take action to do that in certain circumstances, if it's a policy kind of based decision. But as far as waiving fees, I mean, you have to do something, it's, there's a little more to backing, you have to, you have to track on that, so it can't be a policy to where you just waive fees, you know, on certain issues, but it can be done, it's just, it's a little more complicated than-
It's probably something we can't do tonight, I'm trying to remember when these bills are due, I think it's something we could get done for Monday.
Yeah, so I mean, if it's something you want to do, then I wouldn't, I mean, if council takes any action related to these water meters or the accuracy of them, then, I mean, I think that's something, a conversation you have with Austin about how to handle the, the billing moving forward, and the admin part of that building.
Austin, I'm just proposing a single month.
So I guess my, I'm trying to understand, so we're going to do a work session, which I think is a great idea, because I think it would also give residents an opportunity to provide more feedback, but are we going to table the adoption of any rate changes until after we have that work session?
So, so the rate changes, again, that's where the other part, I mean, you're coming on Monday, you have your actual rate changes, you've already discussed that in the past, and you have another agenda I'm coming for that, but, I mean, those kind of discussions will have to wait for, for next Monday's meeting.
I would love to have a work session in which I can talk about some of the specific houses that I looked at, because there's about 30 that I looked at very intently. Is there a way we can do that? Like, if we provided addresses to Austin, can he assign pseudonyms so that they're anonymized for that meeting?
So, the, that's going to be on the customer, sorry, sorry, the customer themselves, because all that data is there, is their personal data, it's confidential, so if you have some kind of contact with them, and they give you authorization in whatever capacity, it may not be to give their address to their name, but if it's something that, that anyone could figure out who you're talking about, as long as you keep all that stuff confidential, and you use that as general data points, and that's fine, or if you have direct authorization from the, from the user to do that, then that'd be fine to do.
So if we got addresses, gave them to him, and everybody has a House One, House Two, we talk about their total gallons for each month, their dollar amount each month, and we don't talk about, well, they hired a con, like, any identifying information, as long as we're able to keep any identifying information out of it, we could use a synonym to talk about a bill.
Yeah, if you did something like House A, and it was generalized information, then you could do that.
Because Jen, you were talking about separating the rates from the, the usage, I see that as being two separate and distinct issues, so I think you can still have the conversation on Monday about the rates, and that, that will have, that will inform the impact to some of the usage issues that we're seeing, and I think it'll be a data point for us to go into that work session.
That makes sense. I do want to get clarification, so if we are talking about the adoption, you know, rates on Monday, that will include charges for water meters that sit on, that are not being used, correct?
So I, I don't know, I haven't looked at the agenda, how it's posted on Monday, but I think the ordinance contemplates only the actual rates.
I put the copy of the ordinance that is proposed at your desk, but I think it's important though, too, to keep in mind that what we're doing on Monday is correcting a clerical error, that the council has basically already approved those rate changes, and so this ordinance corrects the error that was made in the codification of what you passed.
And I would just, from my, from my perspective, the fact that you're talking about an ordinance change that contemplates rates, then in my opinion, that's, opens it up to any kind of rate change for that particular, so all the rates that are in there, they're all listed.
Yeah, those rates-
If we want to add anything-
Those rates contain a basic monthly service charge.
So if we want to discuss any changes to that, that can be done at that time, correct?
Right, it could be, and I, the only thing I didn't know is if that, those rates contemplated meter charges or whatever, or if those are separate charges on the bill, and if they are, then that's something that we have to, if, if the council wanted to address those, they want to make sure we list, you know, meter charges or whatever, however it's listed in addition to the actual rates. But if the rates include these meter charges or whatever they're listed in that, then what we talk about Monday, if it's listed as rates alone, it should be fine, if it contemplates meter charges or whatever it's listed as.
So if it's listed in the document as basic monthly service charge, and it's actually listed in the thing, we can talk about it, correct?
Which is billed per meter.
Per meter, then it should, it should be fine, talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to be clear, the caption heading that's in your paperwork, if somebody could read that so that we make sure, because this agenda has already been posted?
Well, I mean, the agenda can be amended, I mean, we have 72 hours is the limit on that, but the, but if, but if that ordinance, we're considering an ordinance, it talks about rates, meter rates, I mean, not meter rates, yeah, rate schedules, if that rate schedule contemplates meter usage, then you'd be fine to talk about the meter charges.
So basically, as posted, consider Ordinance 2328, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Chapter 70 Utilities, by amending certain articles and sections of Chapter 70 to provide for amendments to water and wastewater rate schedules, providing severability clause, providing repeal, providing a penalty by Section Eight, uh, 1-8, is that?
Fine, I mean, as long as the rates are included in that ordinance, contemplate meters, then you're fine.
Since it's on the chart, it listed as the water schedule, it's under rates, it says basic monthly service charge for sprinkler, regular, residential, and commercial.
Says wa, water and wastewater rate schedule, so I'm assuming that it's going to be okay, just want to make sure I don't need to do an addendum.
Again, as long as it's, I mean, the, the thing is that, although we are technically amending what the council already approved, the point is the council's adopting an ordinance, and the ordinance includes those rates, the rates include what the council wants to discuss, then, then you're fine to talk about it.
I take it from what we're saying is that the posting is correct and we're good to go?
Yes, yeah, you're fine.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Just, just one other thing, and, and this is, this is going to come out incorrectly, and I need, I don't mean it for, for it, too. I think one of the things that we've talked about tonight, and I think Councilmember McCray brought it up, was the, everyone who takes service from the City of Jersey Village is, at the end of the day, a customer, right? We want that to be a great customer experience, even though you're beholden, and you really don't have any other options but to come here. So when you have a problem, even though, though it's standard, and it becomes a, this meter's bad, the plumber says it's good, or whatever, you know, I, I want, maybe as part of that workshop, we find a way to have some additional recourse, or best practices, what other municipalities are doing, things of that nature, where we can handle it downstream. And I'm not saying we're doing a bad or abnormal job now, but I think at the end of the day, if we can find a way to improve that process, we ended up coming away here with better than where we started.
I agree, and I think that's smart, and I think some of it is, you know, you have to realize that in a span of, I think it's three months now, not only did we raise rates, a section of, one section of meters, one month, or whatever it was, didn't get read at all through a staff error, and then we have a clerical error on this, like, it's not, I think, I feel like sometimes we're also looking at an optics issue, and it's not necessarily the, you know, it's not, it's not instilling a lot of confidence right now, I think, in, 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 like you're saying, as a customer, you're kind of like, um, come on, you know?
I do think that if we're missing a reading, and they're, and they get billed the next month, that it should be adjusted correctly so that, because they're missing out on that lower gallon pricing, and we should not be charged.
Absolutely, 100%.
I think at the end of the day, we may, maybe disagree a little bit on sort of the path to get there, but I think everyone up here, and all the staff included, are trying to figure out how to figure this out so that we ensure that people have some confidence in the way that they're being billed, that they're being billed fairly, I think that's the key term, everyone just wants to be treated fairly, and that's what we all want. And it may be a little messy trying to get there, particularly, I think the problem is because a lot of this is not necessarily a political or a policy issue, it's a technical issue, and obviously, at least, I'm not a technical guy, at least as far as engineering, so it may be a little bit of a struggle, but we're, we're, we're moving in that direction. So I want to thank everyone for their patience as we move through this process, and thank you to all the council members for, for pitching in and helping us move this forward. So unless anyone else had anything else, that's the only, that was the last item on our agenda besides adjournment, so, any, any other?
Hey, James, I wanted to clarify, we do adjust that when we have a zero con, we don't get a reading, we adjust it to make sure, we use, we pull the data log to make sure that the one bill doesn't hit, if they don't hit that threshold in the next year, so they don't have to pay that penalty, does that make sense? For example, if you don't get a reading in one month, and the next month is 10,000 gallons, they don't get the 10,000 gallon tier for that month, they get, they will get adjusted based off of a data log, it'll reflect 4,000 and then 6,000, so they won't have to hit that tier.
I got one I want to revisit with you, but I believe you. Make sure that, that's how it was done.
Okay, so, I'm, we will, as far as trying to figure out a, a time for a work session, I'm sure Lori will be conferring with other staff members that need to be there, and reaching out to council to see what days and times work best, obviously, we want to get this resolved sooner rather than later.
Did the council have an idea about how long, what are we talking of, on a meeting? Will it be?
Ooh.
Do you think it will be, and I, I'm just curious, so I can kind of-
More than an hour.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, yeah.
More than an hour, and it needs to be after work hours, so people can attend. We need more citizen involvement in this, and we need them to have the opportunity to present, discuss their issues.
Okay, all right, we'll make that happen, we'll make sure people know when that is, so, okay, that's it. Thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned.